...United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just want to note there's an item 6B. There was to be a presentation from a representative from Habitat for Humanity. We just learned he is not able to join us today, so we will be sort of in that part of the agenda. So I move to approve the agenda with exclusion of item 6B. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We'll move on to item four, which is the consent items. Is there any discussion about items on the consent agenda? I guess the only thing that I was willing to discuss, or actually that's on the next agenda. So consent agenda is, is there a motion to approve it?
Motion from consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is thereby approved. Moving on to action items, item number five is action items. We have an approval of the payment to Cold Spring Bakery in the amount, total amount of $2,522.28. This has to be approved by resolution. Is there a motion to approve the payment to Cold Spring Bakery?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to Cold Spring Bakery.
Second.
Motion by Sunny, second by Jason. Any further discussion? And then we'll do a roll call vote. Go ahead, Jason.
Aye.
Aye.
Same.
Aye.
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 The motion passes. We also have a resolution to accept a donation, another resolution, and we always want to thank those who are generous and give to our school for the benefit of our students and our community. We did receive from Donler Construction a $4,000 donation that is designated purposes for the Rorcorey High School Spartan Build. Do you have any further information on that?
I wish I did, but Chad was supposed to be here tonight to present on that, so we're going to, I'm going to recommend to the board to accept the donation, but thanks. And we look forward to having Chad present to us next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
I think he said next month, I don't know.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the donation from Donler Construction?
Make that motion.
I'll second. Motion by Len, second by Jennifer. Any further discussion on that? All those, actually, we'll have to do another roll call because it's a resolution, so Jason, you're up.
Aye.
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 And the resolution passes for the donation. We have another resolution on the docket for directing administration. Brad, do you want to share a little bit more about the purpose of this?
Yeah. Each year as we start our budgeting process, we have to look to see whether or not we will have to reduce programming, or if we can, of course, improve, we will do that. So this each year's annual resolution that the board directs us to make the necessary changes, whether it be reductions or whether it be improvements into the next year. Our hope is always to not reduce, but if we need to do that, we need to be, you need to be on record saying we can do that. So I recommend...
Is there a motion to approve the resolution directing administration?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Sunny, second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, but we'll start with Jason, it's a resolution.
Aye.
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 Any updates? We do have also for an action item is employment agreements, principals, program manager, building and grounds director, business director, community ed director, food service director, and technology director. Len or Sunny would either be willing to sort of walk us through the process of negotiations on these?
Do you want to?
I'm looking at you.
I'm looking at Len.
Well, we've been working on these, and then that would, you should be, well, in this case, principals at the union, the other program managers and the directors are all individual contract, or under individual terms and...
Terms and conditions of employment.
Conditions of employment. So we had met with all of them to hear their concerns and look at what they would like to see changed, and we worked on changes that we felt would be fitting within the budget and be as fair as we could. And of course, with the principals, we did have, because they're union, we did have to follow through with more negotiation, and we feel comfortable with what we're presenting and like more to a purpose tonight. There are all of the copies of the contracts with, if you had a chance to look through, so you could see what was changed in each contract, but with some language, most of it was salary.
Any other questions or thoughts?
I guess the only thing that I would point out is that percentages of salary increases may vary across the groups, but we did look at total salary increase as far as dollars go, and they're pretty comparable, all within a ballpark range. Obviously, some, you know, a group has to be the lowest and a group has to be the highest, but they're all within a comfortable range.
Contracts that have steps in them, those look a little different when everyone is either at the top of their level or if they don't have steps built into their contracts, or terms and conditions on employment.
Are his salaries comparable to other districts in the area, size-wise?
Yeah, that was another factor, was the market, and similar-sized school in the similar area that what we're offering is competitive. Actually, that was a consideration for all of the groups, even the ones we've already approved.
So it's my understanding that you've added, the negotiations committee has added a meeting on Thursday?
Yes, we have a meeting on Thursday.
To discuss one of, some of these contracts, and so I'm curious if it makes sense to remove those contracts from this.
So we're, we have a meeting on Thursday to discuss some of the terms and conditions of employment. They're not contracts, so they're not any of the union groups that we need to negotiate with. The meeting is more to answer questions, you know, listen to additional concerns, but it is our normal practice to meet with each of those groups, get their feedback, prepare our response, and then bring that response to this group the next meeting for approval. And that's what we've done with all of these groups.
So based on all this information, what is the committee's recommendation?
From my perspective, and I think that's speaking to all three of us, we're recommending approval.
We're comfortable with it.
Then, your motion? Given the standardization of the process and the recommendation from the committee, I move to adopt the employment agreements as listed in section 5D.
I'll second.
Motion by Kara, second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is, again, a discussion item, the revised budget for 2021, 2022.
Here we go. Good evening. Last time I did this, I totally forgot the mic, so we're going to make sure it's good. I'm just going to wait for Mr. Kelvington to bring up the budget so everyone can see what we're looking at. Can you make it a little bit bigger? Is that possible?
I'm going to test my skills.
Yep. Can you zoom it all? I'll let you work on it. So the first, the first page that we have here is our summary of our anticipated fund balances. So your first column there is our actual fund balance at last June, our anticipated revenues and expenditures for our revised budget, and then last column is our estimated fund balance at June 30th, 2022. So taking a look at the general fund first, a lot of this is very comparable to our original budget that we approved in June. Your biggest differences there, you're going to see, are some planned spend down under staff development, under our targeted services, which is summer school, and then the alternative compensation, which is cucumber. The unassigned line there, you can see about a $43,000 planned decrease in fund balance. It's about a $50,000 change from our original budget. We've got some additional staffing and other items that were added on, and that's what you'll see as we get a little bit deeper into the budget. As far as all of the other accounts are pretty much in line with what we had planned already on original, spending down our long-term facilities maintenance, food service has got a little bit better of a jump with what we're doing for our programming this year, and then community ed is seeing some changes as well, with some better estimates for actual participation over the past half of the year. The next page we're going to jump to is the summaries of the various funds. So the general fund there, we've got a lot more detail on that on the next couple pages, but basically the breakdown is we've got about a 4.3% increase in revenues, and about a planned 5.2% increase in expenditures. And as we get into that fund later, we'll talk about a little more of the detail. Transportation, we always budget this fund to essentially break even by doing a transfer over from the general fund to cover any shortfall from state aid. Generally, our state aid that we get is not enough to cover our transportation expenses. We're actually looking okay for right now. Part of it is that we've actually got a decrease of four regular routes from what we originally budgeted, and we've got some driver constraints going on, and so our vendors really had to decrease the number of routes that we're doing. That is offset by an increase in our contract rates. And then on the revenue side, we've got a small jump there in our transportation aid tied to enrollment increases. Student activities is the next one. Again, that one is budgeted to break even. Those are the accounts that are for the students, by the students, mostly fundraising that they use to do, and they are managed their own accounts there. Next page, in the darker blue, is our capital outlay fund. Again, not a lot of changes from our original budget here, just a little bit of a difference for operating capital there in state aid, and then we are decreasing our expenditures just slightly. We've got some conservative estimates for some of the projects that we do. So so far this year, some of those costs have come in under budget, under what we're expecting. So overall, change in fund balance there, about $440,000 on the year. Most of that is in long-term facilities maintenance. We've been kind of going slow on that fund at the moment, trying to build it back up for larger projects that we have, and anticipating we might even end up further under budget in that fund, depending on what happens with our task force. Through, they're kind of all over the place for where we're spending them. A lot of it is going to class size reduction, so essentially we're keeping extra teachers on, getting smaller sections, we can keep our classes smaller now. We've also got some counselors that we paid for. We are anticipating new classroom interactive displays in every room, so we've got some nice ideas planned for using that federal funding up. So overall, increase in the general fund expenditures, 5.2, 4.3 on the revenue aside, so we're seeing just a very small anticipated decrease in our general fund unassigned balance. The very last page of our budget information is the breakdown of the community ed fund. The community ed fund has several different revenue streams that come through it, and that they're restricted in different ways. So that green column is community education, so that's our youth enrichment and recreation, those are our childcare expenditures and revenues that come through. Overall, anticipating about an $80,000, $85,000 increase there in the two. So essentially, we've almost completely depleted that fund balance over the last two years with COVID. We're hoping it's going, this is the good point that we wanted at for this year, and then going forward, hopefully then we can start charging back some items to community ed, things like general expenses for this building, or it could be going to our early childhood or school readiness programs that also don't really, don't really run at the greatest net profit, and not by fault of their own, but because our state aid funding for these programs is so minimal, and our fees we charge to parents just cannot keep up with the costs of having the really good teachers and parents that we have in these programs. So that ECFE and school readiness is shown there under the teal and under those yellow columns. You can see for this year, ECFE, we're spending in town of it, that $17,000 fund balance, that's about where I'd like to see it at, staying there. So going forward, we want to budget that our ECFE breaks even, and then school readiness, we're breaking even, but it's mostly because of the way we're funding it this year with our SRE funding. I don't anticipate school readiness is ever going to break even unless the legislature says we're going to fund three and four-year-olds, and we could maybe do it. Last column, AB restricted, so that's our adult basic education aid, and we get flow-through funds from the St. Holm School District to provide ABE instruction, and we've got actually, I believe, about ABE $200 extra this year. It was another federal grant that came through. A lot of the programs we have have this extra little federal bump this year, which is nice, but a lot of stuff to track and manage for everybody. So that's our budget. Does anyone have any particular questions about any of that information?
Can you, can you go back over the transportation fund, and can you explain to me, just like explicitly, how much is being transferred from general fund? So I know that route, number of routes has gone down.
Yep.
Cost of operations has, per, you know, per student has gone up, so how much are we transferring over?
So we are transferring nothing. For the revised budget, we're at zero. Our original budget was about $120,000. I'm trying to think, over the past seven years, we've probably averaged between 110 and 130 with how much we've had to transfer over from general fund to cover transportation, just because our aid does not keep up with what we provide for our students.
Okay.
There is after in the budget packet, there's a staff, like a staffing patterns sheet that I do every year, and I just want to put that one with the budget, so you can kind of see, it's okay if it's not up, so that you can kind of, everyone can, you can see it in the budget book there, our increases over the last year in our staffing. I believe it's up like 21 FTE, a lot of it's between our parent and our teacher, and it's the small class size I talked about, and then some of the adds we've done, like counselors and special ed teachers and parents for sure. We've had a lot of openings in the last year, and we've really been filling.
Does that include the online tool component, additions there?
For the teachers, yes. Yep. Yeah, we had distance learning last year, but I'd say we have maybe .5 to 1.0 more FTE in distance learning than last year. And so this one is just for discussion tonight and for your review. If you see anything in there, have any questions about it, please feel free to ask, and then the approval will come at the next school board meeting.
Any other questions?
Well, a lot of the additions we've made with paraprofessionals and extra teachers won't continue on once the SRE funds run out?
The ones that are there for trying to keep our class sizes smaller, those will definitely be coming off. We're definitely using that SRE funding to try to keep the class sizes smaller, and we know there's going to be a cliff, for lack of a better word, and we're going to have to right-size again for our enrollment.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Because we removed 6B from the agenda, we're going to move forward with 6C, which is policies. There are four policies that are being presented for the first reading. These have run through the policy committee. I'm wondering if anybody from the policy committee wants to comment on the work that's been done on these policies?
I guess I can, Chuck, in time.
Sure.
I think the changes on some of these policies were partly with ELI recommendations that came through, and then we're just trying to get, I think, the school, policy 2.3, it's school board meeting guidelines, the template to be a little bit more like the layout, the standardized layout that we have, and have the contents follow that kind of pattern. So, because it wasn't following the standardized pattern.
We sort of combined the MSDA policies with our combination. We didn't take over 100% of it, but we combined a few of them.
And that, partly too, that's why we introduced the 215, which is a new one, to sort of separate some of that out, and that was based off of the MSBA policy. The 215 is all state statute required information.
So based on previous discussions or the discussion we had at our last board meeting regarding procedure not being included in policy, will the policy committee start working going forward on removing the procedures? I noticed a lot of these still have procedure in them.
Yep. That's the plan. We had discussed that, and I think that was the, the most recent policy was it 615 that we approved at that special meeting?
Yep.
615, yeah. So we're looking at that one specifically to make sure we can try to have some of that content, because some of that, 615, has some applicable parts to it yet, but not all of itself.
Right. But so then, going forward though, when you bring first readings for new policies, will you be removing procedures from those as well?
I think that's the goal. As we, we've talked about it at the policy meeting, we want to start, it's going to be more of a priority, because it really wasn't brought up beforehand.
Yep.
So this will be moving forward.
Okay.
And I think partly with the, I would expect some changes in 2.3 coming forward, even though this is the first meeting, because it was the first meeting of the year, or this year, we wanted to try to get that out there, so that we could get the ball rolling. But there'll probably be some changes from next time.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my only comment was in policy 920 regarding student surveys, there's a lot of addition of language that in my mind is a lot of implementation of policy, and just, I don't know if that's procedure again, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're putting a lot of onus on our leadership to, regarding like a right of a parent to inspect requests, survey regarding the survey, which I'm okay with all of that, it just, that's a lot to administer, and so I just want to make sure we have a solid process that we're doing that consistently. Was that discussed?
I don't believe we typically discuss that, no.
So can I clarify, so in the policy, you want to make sure that all of us are being consistent? If there, if there is in there that we're being consistent for building the building on, for example, certain surveys?
Right.
So we definitely can take a look at that at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll be meeting the first one.
Next week we'll be meeting. Is it next week already?
Yeah.
September next week, or?
I guess if there's just anything that requires like a cyclical action, like we have to review annually with everybody, I think I've read some, I can't find it, I'm digging for it, but I've read something in here about, there's like a, some responsibility we're putting on ourselves, which is fair, that there's a process in how we actually successfully and repeatedly implement our own policy. And when I find it, I will let you know.
Are you, are you going to?
I saw it earlier today, and it kind of stopped me.
Are you taking a section 10 of a harassment policy?
Are you taking a section ten of the harassment policy? Item M, this policy shall be reviewed at least annually for compliance with state law.
That could be it too. But I feel like there was something with the student survey one too that.
Just try to reach out to us before.
Yeah, I will.
Wednesday.
I will.
There is, there is notification on our website that we have to do around student surveys. It's, it is actually on our website, if you look under, I think it's under information.
Okay.
Public notice. And then there are notification of rights under protection people. I'll have to look through that, but I believe that's where that is. Yep, so receive notice and opportunity to opt out of a student, of any personal protected information survey regarding the funding. Okay, so that's there under that PP, PPRA.
Okay.
If you're right, there is an annual requirement, we make sure that that's on our website and it is there.
Okay.
That's a good question. So that is just the first reading. If there are any questions?
Yep, I found it. So we'll talk about it right now.
Okay.
So on page nine-twenty, then page five, item two, section A says, "The notice will be provided at least annually at the beginning of the school year and within a reasonable period of time after any substantive change in the policy." Notice will provide parents with an opportunity to opt out of participation in the following activities. And that lists a bunch of things. So again, that was my only, just the implementation and practice of this consistently would be my only concern. I'm fine with the language, but are we actually doing it?
Well, I did send home a, in an email back in first part of the year, all the notification of it. Now, once we, when we get into the student, the actual student survey, the actual student survey, we are required to have a, I think it's one month prior to. And we discussed that in our administrative meeting, not the sign, the last sign, about making sure that we're meeting those deadlines.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on the first reading of these four policies? And again, this is just a first reading, so we will put these same policies with any other proposed changes in the next board meeting and they would be up for approval at that time. Okay. Moving on to six D policy, this has been discussed at the policy meeting and it's being presented for a second reading and a call for public comment. It'll come back for approval on February fourteenth. And this is the harassment and strikeout, or excuse me, it's the harassment policy. This is a strikeout copy. There's significant, number of changes in this policy. Policy committee folks, can you share with us the process on going through this one?
Yeah, this, this is the second reading. A lot of this is again based off of MSBA. And I think we had the model policy and that's why the violence piece was added to that. So many of the suggestions that also ELI had an opportunity to look through this and provide some, some of the feedback too. So I think those two of the biggest changes were from those two groups.
I have a couple of comments. Page seven-four-five, we, we talk about a principal's designee. So in reporting procedures, section D, section D, the building principal, the principal's designee or the building supervisor. I'm just wondering if principal's designee is vague and if there's an option, if any more clear. So that's just one comment. The following page, seven-four-six, the designated HROs are the activities director and superintendent. I don't know if, when you guys put the job description together for the HR position, but if it's formally in that job description, that's something we can add. I think you guys are going back to review. Is that committee reviewing that job description or?
That committee did review that job description, but I didn't get into the job description. I think it says assistant.
Okay, perfect. And then this one, like a lot of our policies, has a decent amount of procedure. I think there's, there's some antiquated, on page seven-four-eight, there's a sort of an antiquated, like our report will be printed and handed to someone, this is in section F. I think there's, and this, this kind of highlights the, maybe the complication of putting procedure inside of a policy is that when we're sort of forced ourselves to comply with potentially out of danger, unhelpful processes. And so there's an opportunity maybe to look specifically through this policy for process and below. But this is kind of coming through after that primary discussion. So maybe, you know, this, this policy can, because it's reviewed yearly, can be passed through with the intention of next year, as much as possible. And then also just making sure that any of the changes that were recommended, particularly, well, any of the changes that were recommended comply with our legal, you know, comply with what our legal counsel would recommend. So if we can cross-check that, that might be a good idea.
So I just have a comment. And in the, I mean, obviously this policy is very specifically speaking to harassment of protected classes. I feel like in the purpose statement, the very first sentence should be that it's, the purpose of the policy is to maintain a learning and working environment free from harassment, period. Any, I mean, all harassment. And then obviously pointing out harassment based on protected class. But I feel like this is all about protected class. So what if somebody has a harassment complaint that is not one of these protected classes? Or an issue doesn't follow, so then it's okay? And I, I know that's being, I know that we don't believe that that's okay, but I feel like some of the wording maybe needs to be adjusted a little bit, just to be all-inclusive.
Where did all, where did that language come from? You know, was that an ELI suggestion?
The purpose is, I remember it's from MSBA.
Really?
I think, I think that is a good point. Like the first sentence is, you know.
Should just say free from harassment, period. And then somehow restart the second, you know, a second sentence to cover all of the protected classes.
You could say this may include, you know, but that exclude.
Right.
Am I missing where it defines that? I mean, I generally know what that is, but like where's the definition of that?
Of what, protected class?
Oh, here it is.
It's in the very, it's in the purpose.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I do feel like that can introduce some confusion if you're not really familiar with that term and what it means. That would potentially put a person or a student in an unfair position that they maybe didn't fully. So what do we do with that?
We bring it back to our February third or whatever that Wednesday morning meeting is. And then when it's reworked and we put it back out for review. And if we can send it to, have another second reading on it, we can send it to legal too. Just to make sure that some of the changes that we're making are getting the requirements.
Right.
So that might take longer than bringing it back to the next board meeting, but I think it should come back all as one package. And I think a second, a second second reading is appropriate and that, we've done that before. So there's a, when there's a number of changes, I think it makes sense to not bring it back as a final reading.
So we'll, we'll do our work, we'll send it off to legal. We'll bring it back at the next meeting where we, where it's all done as a second second reading and we'll prove it after. Does that, does that sound clear?
Yep, that sounds fair. Okay, next item is six E, COVID protocols.
So tonight, school board, I bring to you a plan which would, which would change our current protocols, COVID protocols. The rationale for trying, for changing our current protocols is that we, we're trying to have as much in-person instruction as possible, as safely as possible. That's item number one. Our current reset plan is, is resetting lots of kids who don't have any symptoms. And so not having as much in-person instruction as we would like to. The CDC did come out with some guidance in late December that shortened our isolation. And so we've been, we've looked at that, we waited and hold, and held on until MDE and MDH came out. They're supporting paperwork and I want to say it was around January tenth, twelfth, eighth, something like that. We've been reviewing and monitoring our COVID responses and our positive cases along with our resets. Our staff has done an incredible job of trying to manage the volume of cases since returning from our winter, winter break. At this time, I'm going to recommend that we prioritize isolating individuals who are sick and informing people who, about, informing families about positive cases as well as staff. And we would, we would give families and staff choices. And we would go away from a reset unless it was absolutely necessary. Like a no-brainer type where we might have a class of twenty with seven to 10 kids positive. I think that's a, that's a no-brainer type situation. We are, with this, with what I'm going to present to you, relying on, on personal accountability. That if your child is sick, please keep him home. If you as a staff member are sick, stay home until your symptoms have improved. With that, you see on the first page that if you, if you're a staff member and you test positive regardless of status, vaccination status, you would do one of the following. Stay home for five days if no symptoms. If you have no symptoms or your symptoms are resolving after five days, you can return to work if you mask around others for five days. Or you stay home for 10 days and return on day eleven with no mask. If you have a fever, continue to stay home until your fever resolves without using caperit, reduce medications for 24 hours. That is nothing different than we do if you, if you have flu-like symptoms or any type of other illnesses. Symptomatic staff, they return to work if they provide a note from the healthcare. We know provider that they, we know that people have seasonal allergies. And so we don't want to have people stay home if that's, that's their symptoms, that they can provide that. Under, with staff, if we, if there is an exposure to a close contact, again, we're going to require that staff daily screen, make sure that they don't come to school sick. If they do, I'm sorry, under, after the exposure or close contact, they have some options. Return to work and monitor for symptoms, masks are recommended. Quarantine for five days, return to work and wear a mask around others for five days. So they have a second option there. The third option really is, is null with option number one. And then the last option, so I would, I would recommend that we cut off bullet number three. Bullet number four is you return to work on day eleven with no mask. At any time, if you develop symptoms or test positive during the exposure time, you would follow the positive test protocol. So let's say you, you have an exposure, close contact and you're symptom-free, but then on day three, you start developing symptoms, you would go home and you would start day zero. And then you can start your five days, come back after five days monitored. So there's just a way to come back. I, we did include, or I am recommending that we include household exposure. We do know that if there is somebody in your house that you are exposed to, that if there's a general, there's more of a likelihood that you're going to get the spread there. And so I'm recommending that we keep the house exposure as part of it. You stay home for 10 days without, without a COVID test, return on day eleven with no mask. Or you stay home five days and test on day six, return with a negative test and mask until day eleven. Any questions on staff?
I do. How are we handling the paid sick time? If the staff member chooses to come, return to school after five days with a mask? Or if they choose to stay home and return on the left, day eleven? How, how was the sick time being handled?
So, yeah, so the last, last year, it was the last, there, there was a COVID ban where districts were giving those. We do not have that. So it has to take from their current sick bank. If they have it, if they don't, unfortunately, it goes on the.
Okay.
And since we're not anticipating doing resets as often, there's not going to be a difference between one like elementary and secondary and some teachers having the option to teach from home remotely and other teachers not having that option and therefore being forced to use sick time when others are forced to.
It should make that more equitable.
I'm just reading this, getting this and, and processing this in real time, but, sorry. I'm curious if it makes sense, instead of giving a, giving them a number of options, if it makes sense to just give them like a recommendation? And if there's something outside of our recommendation that they can work with their building supervisor to come up with a plan? I just think we, I, I don't know the, all the different options to me is, I don't know if that's best practice, in my opinion.
So just to piggybacking off that, so specifically for like exposures in close contacts, could our recommendation just be that our staff remain teaching unless they have symptoms? I mean, that's what's in the best interest of our students, right? Is to have enough staff. It's what's in the best interest to support, for staff supporting staff if there are no symptoms. Then our recommendation is that they would continue to teach unless they start to experience symptoms? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah.
Instead of having the, well, if you want to go home, because there might be some staff that will, will stay home because they've got the time and they, you know what I mean?
I do and I don't. I hope that staff would just stay home, be what they're doing with their kids, get them learning. But I'm trying to synthesize this for a second. Under close contact exposure, we again record, so you get notified, let's say you're a teacher. You get notified if there's a positive case in your class at the elementary level. We want you to daily screen for just COVID-like symptoms. If you have, if you start to have symptoms, then you immediately jump back up to the testing.
But otherwise, you stay at work and monitor for symptoms and wear a mask for 10 days. That's, that's the recommendation.
And then if there could be accommodation, you know, maybe there's special circumstances. I think we can provide a rule. And then if there's special accommodations that we need to make for individual staff members, then exceptions can be into the rule, but that's, I don't think it needs to be, needs to be like a board-based policy. I think that that's something that our building teams are capable of making judgment calls. call on. And then just as a rule of thumb for this document, for me, I am happy to like look through it and provide some of my recommendations, but all of my decision-making, um, related to these sorts of procedures is keeping kids in school, um, with a focus on safety and supporting, uh, supporting staff to provide quality instruction. And so to me, that's, that's the board level directive and the rest of this is more of an admin level implementation of that.
Yeah, I guess our, my concern about approving, I mean, providing our feedback, I think is important. I don't know that I want to go through the process of having to approve this because this whole situation continues to, um, morph into different things that we really hadn't expected. And so that requires us as parents, as, um, board members, as educators, um, and just interested parties to pivot really quickly. And if you have to wait for a board meeting to like make these decisions or change things, that is going to be a slow reaction to a really quickly evolving situation. So I'd like to see, although I appreciate being able to provide some input here, to put the administration in the best case, the best situation where they can make swift but thoughtful changes as needed.
All right. So we, we will rework, or we will rework the exposure contact to streamline that, but we'll keep the test, the testing for staff and the household exposure. Then we get to the next page, which is regards to students. Again, we reviewed the guidance from CDC, MDH, MDE. I had, uh, reached out to several school districts and looked at their plans. Um, and again, in the end, um, we want to again, keep most of our, we want to keep as many kids as we can in our schools and we, we think we need that partnership with our families and we thank them for that. So daily screenings are important. If your child's not feeling well, please keep them home, watch for those symptoms. If your child is ill, contact your school building report. If you have questions, please call your child's building and they'll give those answers to you. So if they test positive, students stay home for seven days and may return if symptoms have gone or are improving, fever resolves without using fever-reducing medications for 24 hours. Symptomatic students may return after seven days if they provide a negative test. So again, that, that allows families to say, I'm going to go and have my child tested. I know that testing is difficult at this time, um, but we do want them to have that option to test, um, and to, and to make, to rule out that, that running ulcer, that sore throat is not coded and they can come back. So that's very similar to what we do now. And then also added the piece on the, um, household exposure.
So just a question, why are we using seven days? So the December 27th CDC update to shorten isolation and quarantine period specifically says if you test positive, stay home for five days.
Yep, so the, the CDC guidance, um, doesn't say five days. However, the CDC guidance says masks are to be worn from day six through seven and our staff simply cannot manage having to make sure that students have masks on the day. We simply don't have the manpower and I don't want to put students and staff in that type of adversarial situation where they're having to be masked. I think that's highly unfair to the student and highly unfair to the teacher. That's my, that's my recommendation.
So could we do the five days and recommend the masking and hope that our students and teachers heed that recommendation?
I, I look at a, and I can certainly appreciate the wanting to do the five days. Our resolution back from September, um, calls for the board to be the implementers of a mask. Um, and that is, um, that is why I'm recommending this.
I think we're just saying recommend it, not require it.
Yeah, right. I, I'm not suggesting that for those two days, we would be policing it. I'm just saying that we bring our students back after five days and we communicate the recommendation of masks for the other two days and.
But I mean, the caveat underneath this is that the symptoms are gone or improving and that your fever is resolved. So it's not, you know, still having a fever, still symptomatic, getting worse. Um, I, I mean, I don't think that it's the board, like I don't think that we should be telling you five days or four days or seven days. I don't, I don't, I think we can provide you some feedback, but I don't think it's our job to like edit this document. So I think that that's a good point for you to take maybe back to your team, but.
Okay, I will take that back. I will say that typically, you know, um, seven days, you're going to hit a weekend in there. Um, so you're, you're looking at five days. But again, five days, you could also be hitting a weekend if you're going to miss, be missing three, so I understand both sides of that.
I think we're talking about just a really small percentage of students at this point. You know, with the, if you calculate those five days and like you said, there's weekends on either side, like actually in practice, like how many students in the, in would have to mask in those last two days? I don't know, I'm not going to do the algorithm on that, but I, I just feel like, I feel like the scope is like pretty small.
I will, I will, I'll take this back to the team. We'll meet tomorrow and, um, hope to have this out to our families as soon as possible.
And so can we like implement immediately or like when is the implementation of this? I know we have a lot of students.
Yeah, we would be, I, I looked over, I can't remember if it was Elk River, but they just said implemented this date and they actually ended up having, they ended up like forgiving students again, saying, yep, you can come back today as long as you meet these requirements. So we, we could backdate it all and, and get the kids back. We would notify them as soon as possible.
Okay. I just want to add too, though, that, you know, as Jennifer pointed out, this is a pretty complicated, fluid situation and, uh, you know, I think we just need to make sure that as these changes are happening, you know, we're being clear and communicating to, not only staff, but parents and students as far as what, where our plan is and it's, and we need to be really good about our messaging because, you know, people hear stuff from everywhere as far as, well, it's this and it's that, what is it? And so however, we can try to be, um, getting the right message out to as many people so that it's not confusing in the midst of a lot of change. Um, I think that's important.
Without creating hysteria would be my, would be my suggestion. So good, solid communication that is clear, but, um, not, no fear mongering.
The, um, the plan is to have this tomorrow, hopefully finish tomorrow, send out to families either late tomorrow, afternoon, Thursday, Wednesday morning and then implement ASAP.
Right. The process of this policy, or this procedure, have you, of reviewing this procedure, have you, um, gone through this with your admin team and like what does that, what does that look like?
We went through it last week, we went through it the week before and we went through it finally today.
Okay.
And it has changed from two weeks ago to last week to again this week.
So I guess I would just hope in the future that we're not waiting three weeks.
Don't wait for the board, next board meeting to change it again.
Right. Or even three weeks worth of admin meetings. Like that's three weeks of time that we've had students out for a longer period of time than they needed to be.
So I mean, to Jason's point, like the communication on this is tough because things are always changing and it's a lot of information and details to communicate. Um, so you want to get it, you know, you want to get it right and not change it every couple of weeks, but I, I agree with that. And I, I think that I just want to like reinforce the point that this is your document and you have the authority to change it as you see fit. Now, communicating with us and, and sharing what you're planning, I think is a, is a great practice. But if you, if things are changing again and you see that this document, you and your team believe that the document needs to change or be modified, I wouldn't hesitate to do that without bringing it back.
One of those. Especially if we continue to see either decreases or increases, right?
Yeah.
Next on the agenda, superintendent is the enrollment update.
Yeah, administrative and board reports, um, 7A is the superintendent report.
If I'm going to be quick, um, as you see the enrollment tag, we are holding, holding today, um, two, or 23, so we picked up a couple of students in here that's at this point in January from, from last December, so, um, enrollment looks, um, steady. And that's, that's my report.
Um, next item is 7A2, which is Beth, um, the budget comparison report, December 2021. Do we just, are you presenting or are you just asking questions?
I generally don't present on that one. That's something that's informational. Um, every month if anyone asks questions about it, generally they would email beforehand. Always Mr. Covington does do his summary of it for you.
I don't have any questions. Yeah, does anybody have any questions? Okay, this is just informational, thank you. Um, next item is the board committee and representative reports. And we'll go through, um, starting, usually we start at the end of the table, so now you get to be first, Jason. Congratulations.
First, she'll be last. All right, um, so, um, the Beth Sterns ad district, we met last week, Wednesday. Uh, I think the important point, they, they have rebates coming back, um, to Recoree, so again, they tried to figure out the best amount, uh, they try to guesstimate with the funding because they never really know exactly what that's going to be until everything sort of checks out. So it looks like we'll be getting a rebate check for $38,539 is what we are getting back for our district, so that would go to our general fund. So that was exciting news to hear that. Um, let's see. They did increase their substitute teacher pay to try to be more competitive with the market. And we talked about the grafted school, approving the calendar for that and that's going to, and that's going to be a big one, the Beth Sterns calendar, but that's within our district and we'll see how that goes. They're hoping to open, I think, the 15th of February, but I think the challenge will be, uh, the staffing piece is what they're discussing and so it's sort of contingent upon when they can try and get sufficient staff to allow students to, to start that. So, um, yeah, with that, I think those are sort of the highlights from the Beth Sterns meeting. Um, I did want to report on the Recoree, uh, community, Recoree Proud. Um, so I've been working with Holly, I think we had approved the, the template of the sheet for the application of that, or in the process of trying to get that document online and then that would be under the board, um, information on, on the website. And so the hope is to try to get that active by first of February and then we can try to do some messaging through, uh, community, parents, whoever, to nominate people for that award through the month of February. Um, and then we would review those applications in March so that, um, we would be able to present the, the winners of that, but then also that would give them a chance to attend the Evening with the Stars, which is a name, so give them enough time to have heads up with that, so. And that's the plan with that. Chuck, did you have anything else?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right. Um, and Booster Club, I just was appointed to that and that happened in January after my appointment, so I think the first one will be first Monday in.
First Monday in February.
So I don't know, did anybody attend the Booster?
Because it was the same night as our organizational meeting, so none of us were able to attend the last one.
All right. Those are my reports.
Um, the policy committee met, um, went through almost all of that. I guess the only thing I need to add is that we finished all of the EI, ELI policies, implementation and numerous policies, so that was one thing that we talked about during the meeting, but everything else we pretty much talked about already. Uh, the technology meeting, uh, and, uh, Jennifer, you can add because I had leave halfway through because I had the, um, task force meeting. Um, there, the teacher displays or the smart board displays, uh, we had to send those back.
The samples.
Yep, the samples back, I'm sorry, yep, the samples back. Um, and now they're looking at another brand is being tested to see how they compare. Um, maybe potentially using our SRF funds to, to pay for those. Um, there's some, more iPads been ordered, but yet there is no, there's no ETA on those yet, so. So, I'll wait for those. Uh, the multi-factor authentication, uh, will be rolled out to teachers pretty soon. Um, the idea is that it would be rolled out and then, um, within two weeks, they must utilize that software. Um, audio projections, updating enrichment, um, just working on the Bark software, which is, uh, monitoring students' web searches and, uh, our lease lines are due and we'll be doing an RFP. Um, this is done every five years soon and I don't know, I, I had to leave after that, so I don't know if there was anything else.
The meeting ended shortly after that because a number of people had to leave.
Okay, that's it.
Negotiations, um, we completed our work, all of it. We do have the meeting with several, um, directors who would like to talk to us on Thursday night to go through the, um, agreement. And, um, catastrophic leave, we did have one request, that's our last meeting, which we dealt with through an email, um, process. And reach committee had their first meeting tonight and, um, it went very well. Unfortunately, a couple of us had to leave to come here, so we didn't quite get to stay till the end, but it, um, I was very impressed with the contribution everyone was making towards the meeting today.
I report on community education, on meeting confer, on, and Minnesota State High School League, none of which have met, so I don't have any reports.
Um, I report on media reevaluation of resources, ECFP Advisory Council and Sterns County Family Collaborative are, the only committee that met was media reevaluation of resources. There was a request made by a parent on some coursework. Um, they, we met with the teacher, reviewed the parent request as well as, um, you know, our committee group. Um, I thought it was a really good conversation, very collaborative, um, and it was also a good observation from the parent and feedback, but I felt like everybody was, um, looking at it through the lines of what's best for kids. There were two main recommendations from the committee. One was to review policies on, um, to review best practice for having a policy on watching movies. Some school districts have them, some don't. Um, I felt like the directive from the committee was that, um, when you can monitor things by, you know, personal conversations, you don't necessarily need to policy everything out, but we wanted to do our due diligence and make sure that, um, a policy wouldn't benefit our school district, uh, at this time. So that's being reviewed by Mr. Covington. And then also, um, it was referred back, um, and the principal and, uh, the, um, the staff member met and reviewed the coursework, made some modifications to the specific assignment that, um, includes more parent engagement for, um, movies of certain rating. So it was a, I mean, it was a good example of this committee.
I report on school assignment appeals, transportation. Neither of those have met since we've met last. Uh, I also report on facilities and grounds. We met on January 19th. Discussed the multipurpose complex, it is 95% complete, a couple of last minute things that need to be checked out.
A couple of last minute things that need to be checked off, including the ninth lane addition, which will happen in the spring. We talked about the, uh, a county road two crossing for safety. There was a witness near miss, um, with a child in a bus. And so we are, um, doing what we can to work with the county and the city and potentially make some modifications to make that a safer crossing. Discuss turf snow removal and how we can best get snow off the turf as early in the spring as possible, um, so that our, um, spring athletic groups and other groups can start using that space for practices. And Brent reported that staffing is, we are fully staffed. So knock on wood and hopefully we stay that way for a while. You know, and I cover everything for those that.
Sounded good to me.
Okay.
And the student representatives. All right. Let's see, let me get back to the agenda then. Next item is comments and requests from visitors. Um, we have two individuals that have signed up to speak tonight. We're just going to put up on the slide just so it's clear, um, what the protocol is for comments and requests for visitors. Um, you did sign up prior to the meetings. We have that covered. I'm going to recognize each of the speakers before we start. And then, um, we'll be solution based. We're all going to behave ourselves and we're going to, I'll do a three minutes on the timer. And when it beeps, then I'll tell you to stop talking. And, um, the discussion, just one really important thing, the discussion of personnel or other items governed by data privacy are, are not permitted. We need to make sure we protect everyone's privacy while we're here. Fortunately, unfortunately or fortunately, um, we don't respond, um, but we're certainly listening. That's what we're here to do. And I do, I did add on the signup sheet, an opportunity if anybody wants me to follow up with them, they can, it says email address or you could actually put your phone number here. I'm glad to follow up with anyone that wants to have a, continue the conversation. So I added that to the signup sheet. With that, um, Bill, and I hope I say your name right because the, the printing is a little, come on, help me out.
Steniski.
Steniski. That's what I was going to say.
So, uh, my wife and I have four kids here at school, of course, well, this one. So, um, I actually, you guys did excellent. I have some of the things that I have on here. It's, you know, based off the recent plan. I guess the one thing I have left off that is, um, when you talk about vaccines, I noticed that there was a comment in there and it was on the old one. The non-vaccinated and vaccinated are both at risk of both getting it and spreading it. So I'm trying to understand, or I channel you guys that, which you did earlier and have discussion, why would you put that on there? Would you treat them differently? That's what my wife and I hope that, you know, bring up to you guys. And then the other thing with distant learning, is there some way like the kids can go more live or it's like you call the teacher, kind of act normal. One of our kids had come through and that's what really made us see it firsthand. We love that you're doing it absolutely. We like that plan. You're doing great there. But it's, uh, we were hoping maybe to do more of a, like somehow a live thing or something. Cause like, you know, last year a kid, they're kind of simple and nothing. Atmosphere, you know, they're, they're not involved, they're getting checked out, you know? And so we can do, like, we thought maybe like teams or something, right? You know? Now, to be able to be a lot less, that's going to be great to do a lot less to deal with. And then, uh, so that was kind of it. And, uh, we want to thank you guys for it. You do a great job. You can say, we can say, we do believe. I really enjoyed actually listening, going through what you guys are going through and working through it. It's a key thing. That's it.
Thanks, Bill. All right, um, next up is Wendy Druntel. Hang on, I gotta figure this out.
Okay. So you guys kind of touched on some of the two things that I wanted to mention, but okay, it's no question. So starting with COVID procedures. I know you guys are doing your best to follow state and federal guidelines and protocols. But my question is, I know it's not just the school doing it. It's all across the board. People are saying if you're vaccinated, you don't have to do anything. I don't understand that because a vaccine only protects the person that is vaccinated. It doesn't protect, your vaccine doesn't protect me. So what I'm asking is when you're looking and redoing all these policies, Mr. Covington and your team, is can we make it the same, all or none? You know, vaccinated, unvaccinated. If you're vaccinated, you've been directly exposed, you should also stay home for five days or whatever your vote, you're not determined. Because that doesn't make any sense to me. If you're vaccinated, you could still get COVID. We do want our kids to stay in school. I like where you're going with this. And I'm not even going to say, oh, I'm going to have her down here because you touched on it already. But that is one thing I'm asking, all or none. My other thing I'm asking of you is, I understand before at the beginning of school year, you told us that you were getting emails weekly on Thursdays, I think you said, but they're a bit behind. So what I'm asking is we need to get those updates every day or every other day to kind of stay a little bit more ahead of the game. So when you're telling these parents their kid has been exposed, it's not five days after the fact. So, um, the other thing I, I know you touched on the harassment and violent policy. I'd like to look a little more into that and what you guys are hiding about because seeing that nothing's really changed except that we are now protecting the protected group and not the other kids. And we're seeing a whole lot of other kids that are being negatively affected and picked on or harassed while the people that are doing that to them are getting no consequences. So I'd like to look a little more into that and know what you guys are going to do about that. And I will leave my email and call it, or you can, or you can.
I'm happy.
But I, I do want to know what's going on there because we are having a whole lot of problems in elementary, high school. Some I personally can be kind, some I'm hearing from other parents. So we will look more into that and through to all of our kids, as Sammy said. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yep.
Okay, that concludes the public comment section. We do have posted our upcoming events and activities. Oh, wow, I really don't know.
Time's up, Jen.
I know. Meeting's over, I guess. All right, well, um, uh, we've got a list of upcoming activities, meetings posted as well at the end of the agenda here. Okay, um, that closes, that's the end of the meeting. Adjourning.